Anything else?
No, that's right now it's all I got. I just, I got back from vacation, like I said, and it's just.
Not a problem.
Just trying to get it back together here.
Thank you. All right, on the consent agenda, we have one item, the minutes for our meeting on April twenty fifth. Peter, you weren't on the board yet, so.
Correct.
There are only four of us who are present, so I'll undertake a motion.
I'd like.
Consent agenda or the minutes of the April twenty fifth meeting.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion's made in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Yes. All in favor? Opposed?
I'm in favor. I'm in favor. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Did you do open session? Did I miss open session?
Yeah.
Yeah, I asked if anyone was here for open session. We can go back. What did, is it someone who's, were you folks here for open session or coming?
I thought that the Lions Club would be here to defend their statements, but if that isn't on the agenda, then I'm here to support my friends that they do.
That was at the last meeting.
Ah.
So. All right, then, uh, there's a motion on the floor, uh, is made in second and passed, so motion carries.
Yes, I'm, yeah, I saw that.
Okay. We'll move right on. New business, Country Hen Scholarship. Before I turn it over to, uh, Ryan, I would like to make a comment on behalf of the board and myself to congratulate you. I was extremely impressed with your essay and extremely impressed with the teachers. It's one of the best recommendations I've ever read. And I'm very familiar with St. John's because my boy goes there.
Oh.
So that when she's saying how she had you in the toughest courses and everything, you had to do with the last two years with COVID, remote learning, get yourself getting sick, et cetera, absences and due diligence and everything else, she just couldn't say enough about you. I just think it speaks so highly of you, uh, that I just want to congratulate you again on that.
Thank you.
Plus, your Eagle project. I'm still impressed by that. Uh, how's that coming along, if I may ask?
Um, and every time I've looked in there, there's been more flags, so.
So people are actually, well, that's great. So, once again, on behalf of the board, I want to congratulate you and wish you the best of luck.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you.
We'll turn it over to Ryan.
So Bob Borghardt of the Country Hen reached out to us today and at the very last minute, he couldn't make it tonight, so he asked me to present this on behalf of him and the select boards. Every year, the town of Hubbardson, in conjunction with the Country Hen, gives out a scholarship to a deserving future graduate of college, and this year, the committee unanimously told, chose James Pitney for a one thousand dollar Country Hen Scholarship. As Jeff said, the board and myself and everyone who read your application was extremely impressed at all you've accomplished at your age. And the only thing I'm going to ask is you talk about what you're going to do with your education, where you're going, what your plans are. Commit to it now and let us know.
I am going to Clark University and majoring in game design.
Majoring in what?
Game design. Yep, and hoping to become a game designer in the future, graduate, all that, yeah.
Like the games that distract me or the games that help me model?
Um.
All of the above.
Which one do you? All of the above.
Yeah.
All right, that's excellent. So we have, uh, an award here. I'm gonna ask you to take a picture with the board, the beautiful town of Hubbardson seal.
Nice.
And the most important thing, a one thousand dollar check.
Check.
I'm hoping the board can scrunch together. We'll take a picture of you holding up.
I think probably we should stand.
I think we should stand.
Swing around.
It's more entertaining if we don't, but, uh, I think we should.
Why don't you tuck, why don't we tuck these chairs and then we can stand in front of the, uh, the seal.
Yeah, you gotta go in the middle. You guys move down.
Where are we going? Which way are you going?
He's gonna be in back.
He's tall.
Okay, good, Deans, we'll figure it out from here.
There you go.
There we go.
There we go.
Jeff, you're shorter. Go in the center.
Jeff, yeah, come, come, Jeff.
Jeff, come in the middle.
There we go. All good.
Everybody smile.
A real smile.
All right.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, man.
I'm going to go into Clark University.
Oh, I, where do you go school at?
Um, I graduated from St. John's, I suppose.
Did you?
Oh, I was at Beckett.
Don't worry, the priest.
Seventy-five.
So is Vinnie.
The priest, the priest still remember you.
Brother Burns, Brother Burns.
Ooh.
Brother Ryan.
Yeah, we get hit by Brother Burns.
I did.
Brother Plunkett.
I did.
His hands were about that big.
So may I interrupt the meeting for a moment? I, the, um, the ARPA item on the agenda is, has nothing to do with the,
You let it go. Congratulations. Yeah.
The open session that I saw from June twenty-seventh?
The. We don't have an ARPA.
We, they just have a.
Just the ARPA update. I'm just gonna go over the dates.
Oh, okay. Is there a date to address those concerns that Mr. Blanchard brought forward, or has that already happened?
So I, I provide an update to the board. Um, as was discussed that night, we had a meeting today between the Lions Club, Ms. Young, and myself to discuss the issue, and it was decided after everybody spoke that the issue was resolved. And I was going to give the board that update, uh, today. So the Lions Club and Ms. Young both recognized each other's service to the community and wanted to focus on that and continue moving forward.
All right.
Good.
Well, at least you know your friends are.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
It's not seven o'clock, so.
And to the board, I didn't have a chance.
Oh.
Came out of that meeting for this one to give you that update, so I wanted to be fully transparent, but I apologize if you didn't know that yet. I just hadn't had a chance to craft an email, so.
Ryan, is there anything on the agenda that we could take that would bring us up to seven o'clock? Because the hearing is scheduled for seven, so we can't start without.
So the two longer items would be the budget and the town administrator transition and the budget discussion. So we can review policies, Mr. Chairman, or talk about special town meetings or both.
Why don't we try to do both of those here? So we'll go to the policies review? And.
So I, I brought this item up, so I will give it a intro if you would like.
Go ahead, yes, please.
So. Okay, so the town of Hubbardson has a social media policy. This policy, uh, adopted by the select board on April twenty-third, two thousand eighteen, covers the use of social media by town employees and elected officials and also the, um, official town social media site. So on Facebook and Twitter. So it came up recently and it has come up in the past, and a couple of board members reached out about, uh, what our policy is in terms of social media. So, uh, much like at the meeting in, with open meeting law, the town does not allow certain things on its official site. And that includes, um, defamatory or personal attacks, um, any clean or unclean or inoffensive or offensive comments, anything that violates, uh, equal opportunity or anything discriminatory and the other items listed here in the policy. So I wanted to just review that briefly with the board. The current policy is to hide those posts that violate this policy, to create a record of it that's stored digitally, and then to inform the board in case there was any, um, if the board didn't, didn't like my decision on, on a particular comment. So if staff sees it, they'll bring it to me. That's the current procedure. And then I make the decision on behalf of the board and in compliance with policy. Anytime I'm making this decision, I do reference this policy, so I wanted to make sure, since this, uh, has happened recently, that the select board was still on board with this policy. And then wanted to change anything in this policy that said select board, Board of Selectmen to select board, uh, per the recent change in your name. I'll turn it over to you.
Okay. Uh, one of the rec, recommendations Ryan did make to us, and I'd like to throw out for discussion and then ask for a, a motion. And that would be to change the language. Um, every place where it says the Board of Selectmen to change it to Select Board. Um, so I'll put that out there. If someone would, if you, depending on how you feel, just put a form of a motion. We can discuss it and vote it up or down.
Do you want to do a motion per change, Jeff, or do you want one motion at the end?
I think across the board from all the, the documents, it's, because they all make reference. I, I, I read them all over this weekend. They're all basically called the Board of Selectmen, so just one change for all of them, wherever it appears. At least that would be my recommendation.
Well, didn't we officially change our name to that a little while back?
Yes.
And it stands to reason that we should change all the policies that mention us by the old name for the new name, right?
Agreed. Yes.
Let's do it.
So, um, I would entertain a motion to do that.
I'll make a motion to change the reference from the Board of Selectmen to the Select Board on the Code of Ethics Policy, Meeting Rules and Conduct Policy, and Social Media Policy Guidelines.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made in second.
How about all policies where it says the old wording? Any policy that says the old wording. Can't we just do every policy we have?
We can.
Are you gonna be able to get to that?
Yeah, I will put it in the queue. It'll take me about a month, but I'll get to it.
Okay, then.
I will amend my motion to all policies created by the Select Board in the town of Hubbardson.
Thank you.
And I'll still second that.
Okay, motion made in second to change the wording in all policies of Board of Selectmen, um, from, from the Board of Select, yes, yeah. So, yeah, Board of Selectmen to the Select Board. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Did you have anything else from Ryan in regards to the ethics or the meeting rules or anything, or?
So want to just reaffirm the board's commitment to these policies, and I can make the updates or discuss any potential changes the board wants on any of them.
Mm-hmm. Does anyone on the board have any questions on anything on these, uh, policies? Okay, then we'll consider that. Policies have been reviewed.
Do you need a motion to re-approve these policies so that the date is updated?
I think it would be cleaner, yes.
Oh, okay. I'll entertain that motion.
I'd like to make a motion to update, um, and, or approve the Code of Ethics Policy, Meeting Rules and Conduct Policy, and Social Media Policy and Guidelines with today's date. Second.
Motion made in second to approve all of the media policies, ethics, media, meeting rules, effective as of today's date. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Yes, opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you for that. Anything else from anyone joining to that? Okay. Now, what was the other one you said we could get done before seven o'clock?
Uh, we can talk about the special town meetings.
Okay, yep.
We're in due to Heather's heart.
Go ahead.
So, um, we're gonna need a couple of special town meetings, so I just wanted to get the board's opinion on what we want to try and accomplish with these special town meetings and potential timing to set you up for that. If and when, well, by, by law, the select, not the select board, that's you, the school committee has thirty days to respond to rejection of their budget. So they should be meeting in the next week or two. I haven't seen them post an agenda yet, uh, but I haven't looked this afternoon either. So when they act on a budget, the.
Do we know what that date is, Ryan?
That they're gonna, thirty days from?
Their deadline, thirty days from?
It should be July twenty-fourth. I'm not, not clear on whether it's the vote of the last town meeting, which would be the twenty-seventh of June, or the first rejection. But either way, by July twenty-seventh, they'll need to meet.
You just said July twenty-fourth.
It was five town meetings, so. No later than July twenty-seventh. That being the case, then we would have to respond, if there's any change in their budget request, either up or down, to have a budget, budget discussion in town meeting. And that should happen at least within thirty to sixty days by regulation. So that would be August or September. I'm also aware that the planning board plans on bringing several bylaws, and the Economic Development Committee is, is looking to bring several bylaws to the, to the town at a special town meeting at some point in the fall, but I do not think it would be ready, in my personal opinion, by August or September. And then there's other matters that will likely need to be considered and may be considered after the select board has their goals meeting next, next week. So how do we want to tackle these special town meetings and what is the spacing that you prefer for these meetings? I think having some type of plan for having them will allow us to do maximum transparency. One of the main complaints we get is I didn't have enough time. We need to send out postcards, et cetera. Also aware that one issue, special town meetings are not, not very well attended, so.
Well, what's, what's, um, how many do we need? Why can't we do it in one special town meeting? Focused around the school, the school board discussion.
So we would need some type of extension on the vote for the school committee decision, which I'm researching and trying to find if that's possible.
Okay.
Um.
But you didn't, don't think that it is?
And you don't think it is. So we'll have to respond within thirty days to the school committee, uh, thirty to sixty days to the school committee, which would be September first would be about where we'd be considering that. I also don't think the planning board was planning on having anything until October or November. So do we want to try and condense them down into one, reach out to the planning board for some type of planning? I'm not, I'm not expecting this full decision tonight. I just wanted to have a conversation about spacing these out. My recommendation to Jeff earlier and to others would be to have the second town meeting as far away as possible before Thanksgiving, but not, uh, not after Thanksgiving, but not before September, to give the planning board more time for public hearings, et cetera.
Also, we felt, also we felt by spreading it out like that, we were more apt to possibly get people to come to it, as opposed to having like back-to-back meetings, and they might come to the first one, but hey, the heck with the second. So that was another thought behind this, this.
Well, why do we need two meetings?
So I think, K, KP, I think the reason we need two meetings is the goal of the planning board is to go through their work that they've been doing with their bylaw changes for the zoning.
Yeah.
And I don't think they want to put it on the annual town meeting, because it would make our annual town meeting extremely lengthy. Because I think these are things that they anticipate a large amount of debate on, so they want to kind of isolate them to a less traffic-y meeting. And unfortunately, with the schools, I understand it from Ryan, is once, once they got the no vote, they have to make a decision. And then we're required by law to do something within a period of time, and that timeframe Ryan's indicating is thirty to sixty days once the school turns around and says, and here's the budget. So it just, it just doesn't line up. The, you just can't do the two together, unfortunately. Do you know what the usual costs, not time-wise, behind the scenes, but additional costs incurred above and beyond, you know, what we normally would pay someone?
It's not staff time.
So not staff time. So outside of the piece, how much are we paying election workers and anyone else to attend?
Which is where I was going.
Oh, sorry.
At the low end of fifteen hundred for a mailing, more on production and for, uh, staff, staff meeting, staff work for the actual election, which is additional to regular staff work.
Okay.
That doesn't include my time or any other time.
Okay.
Yeah, but I can't see the planning board getting that together by, it'd be just the public meetings alone, and, yeah, there's no way.
Yeah.
And there's no compromise, because there's no guarantee, as Ryan was saying, that the thirty-day period would, could be extended. He doesn't really think that it could, so that doesn't, we don't have the option.
Yeah, I know.
It would have to be the.
It's like rocking a hard place.
Yeah, it has to be. The planning board could either do it or not, and.
Well, the planning board would have to adjust to the, to the school situation, I would imagine, if it was possible. I think I hear you saying it's not, right?
So here it is, um.
They don't think so, too.
The.
The planning board doesn't think so either.
Commissioner, a thirty-day period, that's for the schools, with an extension from the commissioner of fifteen days, so the max would be first week in August. Then the local appropriating authority, which is the town, has forty-five days from then. If you don't pass it within the forty-five days, it's considered to be passed. So it wouldn't be considered by the town. Which may be fine, depending on the, you know, if the town likes the number or not.
You don't, speaking of that number, you don't think it's gonna change, right, for us?
I don't know. So they have the ability to raise it, keep it the same, or lower the total budget, which would then impact our assessment in, in those three ways.
What's the implications if we like the number and do nothing and just let it go?
By this, um, mass general law, it does pass. I would want to check with the council to make sure that we're not obfuscating our responsibility.
Yeah, I know, but like, what's, what's the implications for, like, residents and things like, you know, like, they usually want to weigh in on that. That, that's my point.
My opinion is that that's not very transparent.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. Even if we all like the number, it's still, we still have to have an election.
Not the time to cheap out.
Or, well, a meeting, I mean, not an election.
Because we may like it, but it's always gonna be people.
Yeah, I know. Oh, I know.
Yeah, so.
Question, Ryan. In the past, have we ever had an opportunity to provide childcare to people so that they could come to town meeting and have someone watch, you know, their six and seven-year-olds or so forth?
You're gonna laugh, but I have a note to bring that up to the board from pre-COVID, and that it didn't make sense.
Yeah.
I also thought we should have cookies at town meetings.
Long as I've been on the board, I've never done anything like that. I've never heard of that.
Because I know some towns do, like.
I think it's a smart idea. It's just.
G club or the kids, students or scouts or whatever will do some.
It just didn't make sense in the COVID environment, but it, we're getting to the point where now maybe it's worth considering again. That's a smart idea.
Yeah, because it's, it's always high schools' kids that need hours for our community service, so.
I would think in terms of especially on the hot items that would affect the majority of the town, isn't it?
Why, there's no age limit for children to go, is there?
No, but some parents, not all parents, I think, are willing to bring their screaming one-year-old or six-month-old or what have you to a meeting and take the chance. They're just gonna stay home. So I think if you provide them some, I mean, I've seen it in other communities, they've done that. Sometimes they've been pretty successful getting parents there, um, to be able to have a quorum, and sometimes not so much, it just, it depends. I mean, I think the other problem we're gonna run in with that first one is we're in, looking at August for that first meeting, right?
Yeah, late August the best.
So that, that's hard on people on vacation. We're already gonna be pushing it to get people there.
Would that leave us in any kind of liability from, uh, from the town, watching, you know, getting people to watch other people's children? You know what I mean?
Think we could probably just reach out to our insurance provider.
I don't think above and beyond, say the Hubbardson Fair.
Okay, and, well, yeah, but they're not watching people's children, so.
No, but schools watch people's children, per se, and they're covering insurance.
Just rub a line in the back of the roof so you can see it.
I mean, a lot of towns do it, so I'm sure, I'm sure reaching out to, we have Maya, right?
Nope.
Oh, we don't have Maya? And I don't know the answer.
Okay.
No, I think it's a good, uh, suggestion. I mean, it would be a nice tool to have to, uh, that you could offer them
Mm-hmm.
on a, on a, if we're having a meeting where we know we need a lot of the people and we think it might be a controversial one, more people coming.
Oh, yeah, when my kids were little.
That would be a great, uh.
I'd say turn it into a social, social, have some refreshments, cookies.
Yeah.
Turn it into more of a social setting instead of just a town meeting. You know what I mean?
Well, before, we had those things where they would come through in the beginning, at the annual town meeting, the, like, meet and greet kind of thing for the different boards and committees about what's going, yeah.
Just to recruit, to recruit for committees, volunteer. Again, COVID killed that. It used to be pretty popular.
Yeah. And. Yeah, I know. Yeah, I know, COVID killed everything. But, yeah, like, when my kids were little, it was so difficult. We, I did not make very many meetings, because I, with that many little kids, nope, not happening.
I think there would have to be some kind of control, because, Peter, in terms of what you were suggesting and not disrespecting it, but if kids were there with the parents, uh, even if we had supervision, hopefully not in the back of the room, it could be offsetting just in trying to achieve the business that you're trying to, you know, those people who don't have kids who.
Yeah, I, I think it more so, more social for the adult.
No, I understand, yeah, yeah.
You know, for coffee, you know, some, people like to get together, drink coffee and have a snack, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So if that's, you know, it's just an idea to get, attract more people.
Absolutely.
You know what I mean? So.
And we can certainly use ideas to get people to come.
And then if they drive, you know, the kids come with them, well, you know, you're gonna, you, you, yeah, you gotta, like, have them off in a different room somewhere.
Like cafeteria or something, maybe.
Because those people without kids and these seniors, all you need is kids screaming, et cetera, going on, and they're gonna get up.
People that'll walk out, yeah.
Early, before you even get your votes and, but that, overall, I think the ideas are good.
Yeah.
And then, of course, if the board is looking to add anything to these town meetings, the window to open the board is gonna be about a week. So, um, we need to know pretty much now if we wanted to add anything, and then you're gonna get a very fast and furious schedule for this town meeting. Um, assuming, and I'm, because all the research I've done today says that you, we, we can't get an extension on that forty-five days, but of course I'll ask Desi if there's any exception.
Well, do we have anything that we would have to add on other than the school issue?
There's, um, one financial item from the cable committee. They didn't have enough in their PEG access account, which is, which is a known issue. So we have one bill with this very minor, non-controversial item, uh, with zero budget impact, and then that's all we have on the town side, the staff side.
What about the Rutland issue?
That would be part of the budget.
Hmm, okay.
So to be clear, this is the second, this is the second pass at the school budget, right? And if it doesn't pass this time around, then it goes to the state to be decided.
Technically, no.
Okay.
They could, the towns could either approve or reject again in the same one-fifth per town vote.
Right.
If it was rejected again, then it would go back to the school committee and those same timeframes apply. So if there was enough time before December first, you could fit in another round of this potentially.
I see.
But it's unlikely.
So December first is the drop dead day.
Usually that's. That's when the commissioner. What's your exact number here? The regional school district's budget has not been approved by December first of the fiscal year, the commissioner shall assume fiscal control of the budget.
All right, then should we, uh, assuming it's the way the board wants to go, agree to two meetings? And should we tentatively set dates so that we can separate them and, given the planning board, enough time is also keeping it far enough apart? Should we do that now?
Probably tell the planning board and bring further information to board, but some idea of how far apart you want them to be would be helpful for that initial conversation.
Well, we're meeting in August, right?
Sh, first one should be in August, too.
So I'd say November.
Yeah, beginning of November, well before Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
But far enough after Halloween, it's right there, sandwiched in the middle.
Avoid Veterans Day.
Yeah, I know, like, that's what I was thinking to, like, crap, Veterans Day.
I don't know what day that is.
Do we need a motion for that, Ryan, or?
That's, it's all, it's, it's.
See a lot of.
But it's, yeah, there was.
So, so that's what we'll, um, push for somewhere in, uh, the August meeting as well as, uh, November.
Do you need a date for the special town meeting, presumptively in August, or are we gonna come back and stab at this one so we hear more from the schools?
There's a chance we'd know by next meeting.
Okay, okay. So on the eighteenth, we can solidify it?
Yeah, if we don't hear from the school committee, then we should set it, we should have that as a agenda item next week and set a town meeting date.
Okay, perfect.
Go ahead.
All right, perfect timing. We'll go back to, uh, it's just about seven PM. We're gonna be having a tree hearing. I'll turn it over to Ryan at this particular point in time.
You gonna run the meeting?
I'm content to let you run it.
You need, uh, to read the general law?
Both of them, yes.
Okay.
Okay, pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter eighty-seven, Section three, the tree warden and the select board will be holding a joint tree removal hearing on July eleven, twenty twenty-two, at seven PM in the Slate Building regarding the alteration removal of the following public trees. Applicant Hubbardson Select Board, address multiple between eight Elm Street and eight Gardner Road. Description of trees, requested six total. I don't know what DBH means. Diameter breast height, standard measurement for identifying a tree. Okay, so thirty-inch maple at Center School entrance, left of sign, sixteen-inch maple at four Main Street, thirty-eight-inch ash at twenty-four Main Street, twelve-inch cherry at twenty-seven Main Street, fourteen-inch maple at twenty-seven Main Street, twenty-four-inch willow at eight Gardner Road. Trees will be tagged and have been seven days prior to the hearing. Anyone wishing to oppose removal of said trees must do so in writing prior to the hearing date. Second one, pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter eighty-seven, Section three, the tree warden and the select board will be holding a joint tree removal hearing on July eleven, twenty twenty-two, at seven PM in the Slate Building regarding the alteration or removal of the following public trees. Applicant Hubbardson Select Board, address multiple between one Main Street and fourteen Gardner Road. Description of tree, uh, ten total, twenty-seven inch horse chestnut at one Main Street, twenty-six inch elm at library entrance, left of walkway, thirty-six inch ash at twenty-four Main Street, thirty-six inch maple at Evangelical Church behind north of sign, twenty-four inch maple at Evangelical Church behind north of sign, twenty-inch maple at four Gardner Road, thirty-six inch maple at four Gardner Road, seventeen-inch beach at six Gardner Road, thirty-six inch oak at fourteen Gardner Road. seventeen inch beach at six Gardner Road, thirty-six inch oak at fourteen Gardner Road, and thirty-eight inch maple at eleven Gardner Road next to mailbox. Again, the trees will be tagged seven days prior, anyone wishing to oppose the rule of said trees should do so in writing prior to the hearing date. These are both duly posted by our tree warden, Jeff Port. Let's tree here.
All right, uh well, I've, all my hearings have been just me in an empty room, so uh um so we had a couple of folks that had voiced some concerns. Was it uh four, it was a four Gardner Road. I've I've got a very spotty service here and everything is on my phone, so I don't know.
I can call it up while you continue.
So the town is petitioning to remove these trees as part of the uh, I don't even know the name of the project, but the the.
Route sixteen?
Route sixteen.
Center, center town, smart, right.
Yep, so it's part of this project. A number of the trees on the list here are in declining condition. Uh there are a few healthy trees, uh but the ones that are probably in the best condition are the ones that are closest to the actual road. Uh generally, when you start to break ground in situations like that, the amount of root damage that's going to occur will kill the trees. Uh most of the other trees are in, not quite dead, but in severe decline or moderate decline. Uh the two on the side of the church, one is in really bad condition, the ones at the willow at the willow and the beach, which are over by uh leading edge, those are in very bad shape. Uh obviously, the ones right out front here of the of the school are in bad shape. The elm by the library is in fair shape, but it's also on this between the sidewalk and the road, as is the big ash, which was uh twenty-four Main Street. So those are healthier trees, but they are right in where the roots are gonna get destroyed on those, so. So I see no reason not to go through with this list. Um this list was not put together by me, but I did go out and identify everything. So I think that the the folks at four Gardner Road were, had some concerns about the two trees on their property atop the stone wall there.
There were a couple on Main that, there was one tree that was tagged, and then there was like another tree almost adjacent that had no.
There were three trees that were tagged that are not on the list, I think people are just trying to get them done.
I was. Oh, oh.
Yeah, afterwards.
One of those is eleven Main Street and and then two at the church.
No, these were like in the middle, over on that side.
Yeah, I think.
You know what I'm talking about? Like there's like, and they're big too.
There's one, and then there's there's like six feet behind the other one, offset a little bit, boat tag.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's that's the big ash that, and then one behind it. Again, I don't know what the parameters were with the design layout, may have necessitated pulling that tree out, but
Yeah. Yeah.
again, I don't know, it has to drainage or something else.
Not sure. I know when they did our road that the trees, a lot of them suffered, cause I live on a scenic, and they did a full depth reclamation.
Mm-hmm.
Now, there's a whole bunch that are tagged that are gonna come down this year, and it's very unfortunate. And I hate to see it, but like the ones at the end of my driveway are dead, like they're totally dead.
Mm-hmm.
And they weren't before they did the road, so it's a matter of time, unfortunately. I hate to see these trees cut down, I really do, but.
Yeah. But there's a number of trees going back in that will be suitable.
They're gonna die. They will be, they are replanting.
I I don't, again, I don't have the list in front of me, but there, everything coming out, there's replacement trees going back in.
Somewhere.
So I think they're redesigning sidewalks, uh putting in drainage, and then re-landscaping and purification.
Bike lanes also are also.
Yeah, bike lanes, it's a whole, it's a nice project, um but there are a lot of.
Bike lanes.
Okay.
Is it bike lane on both sides or just one side?
Say that again.
The bike lane for the for the.
One side.
Uh one side, okay. So there'd be traffic going this way on this same lane, right?
Yeah. Yes.
Plus the sidewalks and everything else.
Yeah, I've seen the schematics, it looks really nice when hopefully it'll be done soon.
Are the sidewalks on both sides of the road all the way to the field?
Uh not all the way to the field, but I think on Main Street, if I remember correctly, there was sidewalks on both.
No.
On the side, and then one side.
Yeah.
And then it just went on one side down to the right.
One side, okay.
Yeah, once you get past the fire stretch, yeah, it'll continue up on the radiant side, sidewalks, yeah, to the to the uh field, yeah.
By J by J P.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, you can see there's some posts that have like ra- uh orange that you can tell they're gonna, that's where they're going, so.
That'll be nice. I'm looking for it though, because I'm a biker and I have grandkids that bring them up to the field all the time.
Like the edge. Hmm, yeah, yeah, the sidewalks right now are rather bad condition.
I know, I tell I tell the kids, how 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 many times can a piece of cement break?
We don't have the sidewalk.
Yeah. I don't know.
How can it crack a million times?
I don't.
Excuse me, Red Rutherford, can you introduce yourselves?
Yeah, um we're at twenty-four Main Street, I'm Debbie.
I'm Roger.
Um we have a situation like you were talking about, there's two trees, and it's like the town line goes through the middle of the tree. So they're taking one, but they don't have the other one marked, and we're concerned with the roots getting dug up.
Yeah, so you've got the big ash tree that's between the road and the sidewalk, and then the one that's behind the fence, I think.
Yeah, right on the road.
Yeah.
Well, no, there's no fence, but.
Or or is it, or but it's set back on the other side of the sidewalk.
Yeah. Yeah, well, we have a stump next to the mailbox that says it's gonna be taken out, and then behind that is a, I don't know what kind of tree it is, but it's broken at the top, so I think they were taking it out because.
Yeah. I think it's that ash tree too.
Mm-hmm.
But then we have this huge maple that's in line with the other ash tree that
If I remember, it is, yeah.
uh when we had another tree taken down by the corner of the house, the tree guy said, you're gonna have to lose that tr- those trees when they do the sidewalk, because when they dig down, the roots are all gonna be hurt, yeah.
Underlined.
Yeah.
And it's gonna be weakening it towards the house, and it's a big maple.
In the front, and then it's gonna be big, and and it's huge. So we had met with David Nixon, I think, the acting town administrator, and he said, well, you know, that can probably be looked into, but never heard any more about it, so. I don't know where that stands, but and and we're only, only one of our trees is listed on that notice that we got, but two of them are marked.
Well, originally, the two the uh two ash trees were ma- uh were on the plan, and then when they went through again, only this one was marked, and we, you talked.
I'm assuming that. Yeah. No, only that one was listed on the trees that they said were taken down.
Yeah, so you talked to someone, and then they all of a sudden they put tape on that one too.
Well, no, when they came and marked the trees, they put them on both trees, even though it wasn't on the list.
That's on the list.
And you're on, you're at twenty-four, you said?
Yeah.
At twenty-four Main Street.
Yeah, thirty-six uh inch.
There's one on four Main Street that's listed also.
Yeah, no, this is twenty-four, thirty-six inch ash.
Right.
Yeah.
I have thirty-eight inch as well, but um.
Yeah, thirty-eight inch, yeah.
Yeah, so there's two, there's one on this one and one on this one.
Oh, we only got one list.
Okay, there's, yeah.
So it's two of them.
Two lists. So there's a, for twenty-four Main, oh, excuse me, that's thirty-six. Wait, hold on.
Oh, okay.
Oh, wait, I was so far off.
I've got twenty-four Main Street, thirty-six inch ash, and then.
Yes.
Thirty-eight inch ash.
I have a thirty-eight inch listed.
Yes. So it was those.
Oh, and then it's the other one, twenty-four Main Street. So yeah, they came on the two different hearings.
Yeah.
Two different, okay, we only got one listing of trees that were coming down, but when they went and put the orange tape on, they put it on both of them, so.
All right, so there are two on.
Two trees are marked, yes.
But there is maple tree that we're still concerned about, it's right in line with the ash.
So I wouldn't put tape on the maple tree.
Yeah, can we go buy orange tape and put it, I said, no, you can't do it.
Well, as I said, that's already been tried, and I've got a couple of locations already, so.
Yeah. Imagine, imagine.
Can you talk about the process? Cause that's a question we're getting a lot for the board is, what if there's another tree that I wanna take down?
So.
It says it's gonna be trimmed, but.
So I I as far as the pro- I don't know much about the project and and how that's being funded or who's in charge of that. Is it possible to include these trees with the project, with the funding that's available? If that's possible, that would be great, cause I have no budget to work with to to take care of these, and the town's not gonna be equipped to take down a large tree on Main Street. So if it's something, if the town decides they do want to remove these trees, we still have to have another hearing for that tree. Otherwise, it'll just have to come up at a later date when the tree's in decline and needs to be addressed then at the town's expense.
Well, I have another question, because when we met with David Nixon back in December, we had gotten some form saying that we could donate the land to the town or something, but all they're doing is town property for the sidewalk, it's not, I don't consider it our land. It, cause it's only coming back as far as the marker for town property. So we asked him if we didn't sign that, what happened? He says, well, they take it by eminent domain, so we said, that's fine.
Well, they would, I think that was about easements as opposed to the trees.
Oh, no, this hasn't nothing to do with the trees, that was something else. But then we got um another letter more recently that says we're supposed to be able to get twenty-one hundred dollars for the land that is in front of our house, which.
It's not part of the tree, but I can, so the town needs to take an easement in order to do this project, and in order to take an easement on your land, we need to give you a fair market value for it. So you can donate the land if you want to the town, or the town can give you fair compensation. People have been choosing both.
What's the easement, further than the town line?
I would have to look at your property specifically, I can't recall it, something like that, but um we did do an appraisal of your land, and the land that we need to take for your land was worth, using your words, twenty-one hundred dollars, so.
Well, I don't understand what that land is, if then why aren't they taking the maple tree that's on the town line?
Uh we're only taking the trees that were identified as necessary for the project.
Well, that's what I mean, but if you're telling me I have land that's worth twenty-one hundred dollars and you're doing an easement, then that tree would have to be on the easement if it's past town property.
Yes, but it's only if it it's necessary for the project, so I'd have to talk to the engineer about it in order to understand why or why not. So let me just ask this question. It sounds like you want us to take that tree down, is that, is that what we wanna do?
Yes, because we're concerned about compromising the roots.
Okay, so can we figure out what the additional cost to take that additional tree down would be while we're doing all the other trees?
Okay.
And see if we can.
Yeah, if it's within the s- I mean, again, it's I whoever's in charge of the project, there's funding available for it, we just have another hearing for the one tree.
Right. Okay.
I mean, we could give up the twenty-one hundred dollars if that's worth.
I was just gonna say, would you be willing to contribute some of that twenty-one hundred dollars to help offset the cost of taking that tree down?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
Yeah, yeah.
We didn't sign anything to to get the money yet, we still have all the papers, but.
Okay. So, yeah, we we got some information to look up and gather and see what we can do and.
Just figure while they're taking trees down and they're there.
Yeah, they're already there. While the SAR is there, yes, let's let's take down one more tree.
Yeah.
Okay, well, especially a big one like that, that's not an easy or cheap job for the town to do, so.
Right, yeah. So I guess we gotta do some homework and um.
That'll work for us, so.
Yeah.
Get back to you if that, sounds like that's what you wanna do.
Will that have any uh effects on the state level in terms of project by adding trees?
Oh, I don't, I think that's a town decision, so, no.
Okay.
And the other, uh we did get one complaint generally about taking down historic trees in the town center. This was addressed by stating that, you know, we're trying to limit the impact on on these trees and then also complete the town center project. Uh there is a trade-off there for sure. And then um one resident came in and just asked that the contractor make sure that any tree removal is done in such a way that doesn't impact foundations or or anything like that. I spoke with the project engineer, said these are concerns we're hearing about the trees, and they said they would make sure that that was monitored. Um.
Was that fourteen Gardner Road? I as I'm trying to pull it up here, uh cause that was the only other one that I had, was fourteen Gardner Road.
I believe so. And I talked to that gentleman on the phone.
Who's who's taking the trees down?
The uh, it would be part of the project, so they'll have a contractor come in and take them down.
Oh, good.
Did we also cover eighteen Elm?
Yeah, I have a letter that was sent to me, the Quinns, yeah.
The one that's forwarded, Ryan?
Uh, no, if you wanna.
So this just says here, um this was addressed to Dan Galante. Uh husband Kevin and I owned our home at eighteen Elm Street for forty years, and writing to express our concerns about tree removal on Main Street. Not in favor of removing healthy trees to make way for bike path and or improvements on Main Street. The tree in front of the Main Street entrance to the school appears to be in poor condition, hence we do not object to its removal. The remaining five trees on the list appear to be healthy, mature trees. As such, these trees have a positive impact on the environment, serve to beautify Main Street, and provide shade for residents and pedestrians. Please consider these observations when making a decision regarding the fate of the trees. Hope you're able, I hope to be able to attend your meeting on July eleventh.
Yeah, they sent me one too, so.
Okay, I saw that.
Yeah, I saw the copy of that as well. So it's not a clear cut, we're not taking every tree off Main Street, it's just the ones that we know will be, ones that are already in poor declining condition and a couple of healthy ones that will be very negatively impacted, that would probably end up having to come down in five years after the project anyway, so.
But like you said, they're planting more trees, right?
Right, and they're gonna be replacing quite, you know, a lot of these trees, trees and trumps and, you know, quite a landscape plan going along with this.
Just further back from the sidewalk.
Just out of curiosity, how are you identifying the trees that were marked for removal as opposed to those where where there may be citizens who are also added to it?
So I I had a list and I had to go, I'm I'm not.
Are they using the same color ribbon or whatever?
Well, a- and that's, this happens, uh again, as long as I've been doing this, and even in private business, people see tags and ribbons and spray paint and they will. So whoever's doing the work has to follow the actual list and use the plot plan. The plot plan uh identifies every single tree uh that is in this hearing. Uh so the one at eleven Main Street and the two in the front of the Evangelical Church are not on that list.
So it's not on the plot plan, no matter what's on the tree?
They're not, they're they're, the trees are there, but they're not slated for removal.
Okay.
And those are trees are identified uh as not being removed, and they are on the plan, but people are just trying to, you know.
So thank you for bringing your concerns through the proper channels.
So take them there.
Yeah, well, he wanted to go buy the orange tape.
We appreciate that. Glad you talked him out of that.
Yeah.
What tape should I use?
Duck tape, yeah.
Yeah.
When is tree removal gonna start, do you know?
I I have no idea.
Right, I'll start.
The project starts in the fall, right?
Next.
It'll start next summer.
Next summer.
Oh, next summer?
Yeah.
Well, she just keeps giving it pushed back.
We need to meet all these requirements in order for the product to be started, and.
Oh, I thought it was gonna be this fall.
Yeah.
It was just advertised, and we begin, it's too late in the season to start, so we begin next season. We'll be publicly putting out that timeline so everybody understands and be noticing the butters for trees, et cetera. I'm gonna get your contact information so we can help you with the paperwork.
Okay.
I'm not gonna say your phone number out loud at a recorded meeting.
Ryan, are we confident that everyone received the notices for the trees being that um these folks are at, I think you said twenty-four Main Street, and they only received one of the hearing notices and not the other?
So I supervised both going out, I don't know why they didn't get both.
Okay.
And I'll reconfirm, but I am as confident as I can be.
Okay.
We actually got two of the same one, so maybe we.
I remember you were from high school.
Oh, my goodness.
Kind of high.
Yeah.
I graduated in sixty-eight, you were a teacher there, right?
Yes, yeah, like thirty-five years, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. I remember people I uh.
The music and I did the music, band chorus, t- theater, uh history, math, you name it, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I remember that.
Ryan, what do you need?
The all the assemblies that they had.
Uh what's your last name again?
That's it, honestly.
Roger, right.
If that's all we need for the hearing, then.
Yeah, so I, at this point, I mean, if if the if the list is approved as is, then.
Sixteen, that's the old high school.
Yeah, that's the old. Oh, it's the good one.
I'd like, Mr. Chairman, would you entertain a motion?
Certainly.
I'd like to um make a recommendation that we approve the list um in both of the advertisements presented this evening for all of the trees related to the sixty-eight Town Center project.
Okay.
I will second that.
Motion made in second, any discussion?
Um, can we vote on those particular things and still help these folks out with their tree concern that they have going vote? So I'm gonna take their contact, help them with the eminent domain uh easement situation and paperwork, and then talk about the tree, see if we can get that added. So this vote will not exclude them from getting the help they're asking for? No, we can do that on the side.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions or discussions? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, thanks, Jeff, thank you.
Okay, really appreciate it.
Thanks for coming in.
I do have both of them, I, it starts out the same way, and I just assumed because we only have one tree listed at the same line.
Do you think the age of the tree, do you know? I noticed, I noticed I didn't call you out too.
Really, we're.
No.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, you said it was true.
Three, four, and three years.
Well, one was for the June twenty slob.
Probably more like a hundred and fifty.
June twenty.
Hundred and fifty, yeah.
Look at your eye.
I mean, that that one ash tree could be one fifty to two hundred.
Yeah, we don't have a problem using that money to take that tree down. I mean, I hate to lose it, but it's.
Yeah.
You can try that afterward, that's very tedious though.
We'll talk about it, so transparently, it's not a one for one swap.
I mean, a good way to look at it is when a house is built, when there's a tree in the front yard.
Like when a house is built, when there's a tree in the front yard. So if you are, I want you to understand what you're donating, and we'll talk through that.
That's a good way to be a tree right there. City trees, urban trees.
You can make a, you know, informed decision. It won't go toward, I mean, obviously, every dollar helps the town, but it's not a one for one swap, so I wanna make sure I describe that to you, and you make whatever decision's best for your family.
Okay.
Here we go.
So we're gonna notice when you're gonna have another hearing or whatever, right?
Yeah, if we can, I'll call you, we'll see what we can do. Um I don't think you're gonna be the only one calling us about trees, so we gotta figure out costs, and I'll contact you and we'll talk about what's next, if anything. When the losses.
Sure, this is this is your meeting officially, the hearing, so.
Meeting adjourned.
I'm dissatisfied, and we can move on to the rest of our business, but thank you again for.
All right, thank you, thank you all.
Do we need to close that?
I think it hurts.
I'd like to make a motion to oppose the tree hearing.
Hearing?
Second.
Motion made in second to close tree hearing. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay. So, back to business. Uh under new business, can I report right to the budget, the end of the year budget?
Yes, we can call up a couple of doctors.
Okay, item C.
Just one second, I catch up.
Okay.
Can I make it over there?
All s- all stiff.
All stiff?
Yeah.
Long weekend?
No, I was cutting up pellets today.
Oh.
Well, cutting them up the road.
Okay, so I just wanna talk about some end of year finances. You'll get a final report, I mean, uh, either later this month or early August on our end of year procedures as we enter, uh, free cash certification season.
Now I know what you're looking at. I thought you were looking at me, I'm like.
Yes.
So, um, I'm not gonna go over every line in this budget versus actual, but for for newer members and for the public, this document is sent out to all of our boards and committees or anyone that's, um, entering bills for for payment through the town budget and town operating budget. We monitor this every single month. It's sent out to everybody. I review it with the town accountant and make sure that we're on track for any financial transfers, et cetera. So by law, within Municipal Modernization Act, we can transfer money within line items, meaning, uh, the moderator's budget, you can transfer within the moderator's budget. But if you wanna go moderator to select board, then it requires a vote from this board and the finance committee after May fifteenth. Uh, we do not have any financial transfers this year that we have identified. Two, two items for transparency purposes. I did authorize the, uh, two IT investments. One, our upgrading our firewall and second, upgrading the Council on Asian Computer and Library Computer, which were missed in the last, those are both public computers last missed. Uh, use the select board's expense account for that in order to alleviate some pressure on the capital plan, uh, given some, even we didn't spend as much money out of this budget as as we anticipated. So the percentage on the right is how much of that budget's been spent. At this point, this is our end of year, so any unspent monies would be put into the general fund and then turned into free cash after the state looks to make sure that we don't have any things that would negatively impact our budget or any liabilities. So that's word soup for if we didn't spend it, it turns into free cash. And then, you know, I'll go over revenue in a second. If we said we were gonna take in a certain amount of money and we went over, then that would also turn into free cash. Free cash is important in this town because we tax up to the levy capacity and free cash is the only budget flexibility we have. So we do intentionally target about five percent of the operating budget in free cash if we can. In some years, we, um, most of the recent years, we have hit that. So looking at the totals here. So this particular section, these are all town meeting votes for either warrant articles or for capital items. And I'm gonna run through those in a second. So you do have to take out some of this money for that. But this line right here, this small line called general fund, so we spent ninety-two percent of the operating budget this year for a, um, turn back of right now eight hundred and forty-seven thousand. So that does exclude approximately three to four hundred thousand in capital projects that'll roll over. And what I mean by that is we haven't finished the capital project yet, so that's going to continue in the budget and will continue to carry those expenses. So what does that mean for you? We're turning back about four hundred thousand dollars to the general fund that will turn into free cash-ish. And this isn't final. This is just, I wanna give you an update on where we're at.
Is that money we could use to leverage the school discrepancy?
So free cash becomes one-time revenue. So one-time revenue is, we don't know that we're gonna get the same amount next year. So you wouldn't wanna use it, you can, but you wouldn't wanna use it for recurring expenses because it'll create a hole. So it would be like getting a bonus for work, um, in your own personal budget. If you did knew you weren't gonna get that bonus or you might not get that bonus next year, you wouldn't incur a larger bill or bigger mortgage 'cause you don't know if you could pay it the next year. So we don't like to use free cash for operating expenses if we can help it.
Also, Ryan, when are we looking to expect to have our books closed and even submit more free cash this year?
Uh, should be either this month or early next month.
Okay. So it may or may not be back to us by the time we get to the August special town meeting for the schools to be able to utilize anyway.
Correct. And if we did use one-time revenue, it would be stabilization and then we've.
Replenish.
Hopefully replenish it with free cash.
Gotcha.
Okay, so I'm gonna go through these quickly just so you know where we're at, but master plan consultant, we're looking to spend that for, um, the implementation of our new master plan, working with the planning board to make that happen. And, uh, to use this beautiful document we've built in order to create a strategic plan. Town center design is done and we're currently using ARPA funds for that. The library foundation repair, there's several of these that have been passed over the years and I'm working with the library to complete that project. But so far, we've not spent anything. The, uh, dump truck is, that purchase is complete. The van stand roof is complete. Slate building parking lot, we're gonna return this money to the general fund, um, in anticipation of a larger conversation about what we wanna do with the slate building. And eighteen thousand once upon a time was enough and it no longer is. Septic design, we have, uh, reviewed the septic system at the DPW and it is not in need of repair as we thought at this time, so that money will be returned.
Well, that's good.
Yeah.
Exhaust mitigation, we're gonna have to return that money and put that back on the capital plan 'cause again, inflation has made that that total irrelevant. Uh, the trimmer is purchased, firefighter gear is purchased. The fire utility truck, this is the the so-called brush truck, has been ordered, but it's a one to two-year backlog like most people's vehicles, so that's gonna carry over for a while. The elevator, you're aware of this, was, uh, received state funding from this in a in an earmark, so we did not need that money. That has already been returned to the general fund, which is why it's showing as a small balance. Uh, the schools did not charge us for cafeteria cabinets, so we'll check with them to make sure they still need that. I sent that request to them a week or so ago. Police cruiser is purchased. Animal control truck is purchased. Sixty-eight project, uh, continues to finalize and that is done. Prior year bills, we took care of that issue at town meeting. The mini excavators, this is all stuff from this year, so I won't go over these in detail, but all of this money from here on is for next year and will be used, so that is coming out of the total as you saw. So again, approximately four hundred thousand in turnbacks, which is a credit to your departments for efficiently spending the funds they have. Um, no one didn't buy anything because they didn't need it. If they didn't need it, they didn't spend it and that's the guarantee the staff makes. They're only gonna spend what they need and we we track it pretty closely. There'll also be some encumbrances in there, but they're very small. An encumbrance is, we took a bill. We knew a bill was coming and we saved that money for the for the following year. One example will be the payout for Chief Perrin. We know that's coming, so we're using twenty-two funds to pay out something that existed in twenty-two that'll help defer some of that cost. Uh, that's what an encumbrance is. The rest of this report is either revolving funds or special special accounts to include CPA, which is this large grouping here. Uh, these are all monies that we're using. One thing you should know is, I track these pretty closely and working with each department that's in charge of them. And we've been, Kelly and I, our town accountant, have been removing these accounts slowly if we don't need them or identifying what they are and documenting them for, um, future posterity so everybody knows what it is. And if we can, we spend them to limit the impact on the operating budget. Some of this stuff was set up years ago and wasn't used and we're making sure we're using it or returning it to the general funds so that we can use it for something else. We just don't have enough resources to have money sitting there. So that is the expense side. I'll pull up revenue. Sorry, this is being painful. That's fast. Okay, it's not a great window. I apologize. So revenue, we go over this every month as well to make sure that we're tracking. So this, in the budget, we tell you this is how much we expect to receive. I give you a lot of information about certain revenues. The main ones we're tracking here is taxes are taxes and state aid is state aid. Main ones we're tracking here are those local receipts, the ones that are variable year to year that we wanna make sure that we're projecting correctly. We are conservative with those projections to make sure that that we hit our numbers. So in terms of taxes, uh, Sandy has done an amazing job of aggressively going after, uh, tax title and money that is owed and has has done a good job bringing money back into the town. This happens when someone sells their house or we're able to reach them or, um, in the unfortunate cases where we have to foreclose, uh, or work on foreclosure. So, uh, a lot of this money is one-time, but we are cleaning up the books. If you see our total for tax receipts, it's ninety-nine percent, which is which is very good. Uh, comparatively. Same thing for excise tax. Okay, we're over what we projected. Uh, we do, we are a little conservative with that number, but that's the one we can count on the most and it is most of our local receipts, as you can see, uh, about half. And then every number you see here, these parentheses or negative numbers are numbers that we went over what we projected and then, uh, obviously the inverse. So we're pretty good on most of these, um, building permits is one that was well above what we expected and I don't expect that to be recurring year to year. We had a lot of building permits pulled this year. We hope that number stays the same, but I I don't think that we can count on that year to year. Uh, also, we returned an ambulance revenue to our projection. Last year, we were well under our projection, so hopefully that's a one-year anomaly. And then our pilot agreements, um, the state-owned land went up more than we thought for our pilot's agreements. We've included that in this year's budget forecast, so we won't see as much returned in pilots next year. Everything here and below, so this tax lien line below, so penalties and interest, sale of surplus and miscellaneous revenue, this is one-time stuff. So we do get one-time stuff every year, but we don't know that it'll be these numbers and these numbers are high for Harborsen. So you'll see eighty-seven thousand, fifty-six thousand, and then eighty thousand miscellaneous revenue. So our total, we, uh, have a surplus of revenue at three hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. So if you add that to the approximate four hundred thousand in turnbacks, we're looking at somewhere between five to eight hundred thousand in free cash. So we're targeting five hundred thousand normally, so this gives us some flexibility. So what do these numbers mean to you is, um, we are hitting our targets for free cash generation. There's a little bit of room in revenue as you'll see in my, uh, recommendations for for any budget changes that need to come that we can increase our revenue projections a little bit, but that is a, that is a careful game because if we do come in under, that means we have to go back to town meeting and ask for more money. So you don't wanna overdo it, you don't wanna underdo it, so we're we're on the good side of being conservative. So I said a lot there. Any questions on any of that or anything you'd like me to dig into deeper?
I don't have any.
I got nothing.
Do we have any outstanding liabilities? Chapter ninety not reimbursed yet or anything else that's gonna hit us in free cash, you know?
Cause the last couple of years, we had, uh, some police detail and, like you said, chapter ninety, we're not tracking any this year, but I I can't guarantee it at this point. So we're just closing the books. Normally, I wouldn't give this presentation in this stage 'cause it's about ninety percent, but I want you to have as much information as possible because of the pending budget decision, so.
Chris, Peter, do you have anything?
Nope.
Chris?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay, so that is the, you know, if there's no questions, that is the BVA or the budget versus actual revenue, the capital, stuff that's outstanding and, uh, we don't have any end of year transfers as of now.
Very good. Okay. All right, then shall we move on to, uh, next new business, town administrator transition?
Okay, so this item, as the board is aware, um, I have been offered a position in the town of Carlisle with a projected last full day here, mid-August, August sixteenth. So I'm looking, I have not signed a contract yet in full disclosure, have not completed that process. Officially, I have not accepted the position yet, but it's time to talk, uh, about what you wanna do in terms of transition. So I've laid out some options. First, my commitment to the town is to make sure that the budget is complete, to make sure that the, assuming you want me to stay for this time period, 'cause that is an assumption that I should not make. But, uh, assuming that is the case, to complete the special town meeting process, to make sure the budget is complete for FY twenty-three and to address, try to finalize any sta- major staff vacancies for some stabilization. And then I've offered to serve part-time or help in any search or transition, uh, but I'm looking for guidance from the board on on what you wanna do.
To that point, I would like to throw it out to the board for discussion on one of the options. Ryan opt, let's see, would, uh, uh, stay with us on a part-time basis, uh, and I asked him this morning in terms of, 'cause I was curious how much time we're talking about. Would this be until we got the in- an interim TA or right through the, uh, per- getting another permanent person and additionally, Ryan had recommended, and I would like to all put this out, that I'm in favor of it, uh, using a professional firm for the headhunting, for the TA, for the town administrator. I'm for that because we're all under the gun and we've got so many major changes all at the same time. This would not include the, you know, search for the chief police. Ryan recommends and I agree, we keep that in-house and that can be stretched out over a longer period of time with our with our own little committee. But for purposes of replacing Ryan and so forth, I think time is of the essence here.
It is.
And there are other towns, including Rutland, that are also now looking for TAs, so.
That'll happen to Robbins.
Uh, I don't know, but their their ex-police chief, Ralph Anderson, he's a friend, he was filming and when I was mentioning we're losing our TA, he said, well, so are we.
Lot of movement with town administrators, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, but Ryan says there's a surplus out there, but in the same sense, as far as.
Yeah.
On the TA side, just.
On the TA side, yeah, 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 right. So I would like to throw that out as a, for the board to discuss whether you're in favor of that or not.
So, yeah, so what i- what would be your, like, time, if you were to help us part-time, what does that look like?
So I would be able to commit to, um, going through and answering emails to making sure the warrants are correct and providing financial management, high, high-level HR and, um, you know, high-level project management would be what I could offer.
And it's like remote?
Remote, mostly, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So that would include any meetings we may be having, we'd we'd have you remotely in that sense?
I'd have to, you know, finalize things. I could do a meeting for a while. It's not something I could do for forever.
Mm-hmm. Understood. No, I just s- so that we, for clarification on our part, yeah.
How long would a headhunter take?
Well, I was gonna say, can we skip to the TA search, K?
Yeah, okay, yes.
So, couple questions to that. So before even the headhunter piece, do you know what the average cost of the firms are right now to hire?
So I got a a friendly quote at five thousand for a basic search.
For the firm, yeah.
Okay, so I think I've been hearing when, listening to the other towns and so forth, it's, you know, five to ten K, ten K being, you know, where you're at.
Yeah, they don't dig the ten K, they'll whittle it down to like four people and give us the results. Is that what we're talking here?
Their recommendation, yeah, essentially.
Sometimes.
Yeah, four recommendations?
Yeah.
So they'll do it, so they'll, I have a person who will come talk to you next week if you want to talk to them about what that looks like. Um, without any commitment, they just come and describe it to you. But generally speaking, you can get whatever you want, but they will either funnel candidates to a search committee or funnel candidates to the the board, depending on how long you want your search to go and if you wanna do some initial screening.
Well, I mean, we're under the gun.
Yep.
That's how I feel. And and I'm I'm, I don't like spending money, but I think it's money well spent, if you know what I mean.
Yes, I agree, yep.
And we have the money available to spend that, ten thousand? I mean, we save, I I believe we save when, if you go part-time, we're gonna save that ten thousand that it costs us to hire a headhunter, correct?
Depending on what you do on the other end.
Okay.
And then I don't have a tremendous amount of final costs, but there's some in there.
Right. Yeah. But in is, is money free, can you use free cash to pay that, something like that?
You can, but you need a special town meeting vote.
Special, to, okay, to spend the free cash.
Or a town meeting.
Do we have money in our slugboard budget?
Well, yeah, my next question, do we have money that could be found?
So at five to ten thousand, I think you you'll be able to find that money in some mechanism and I can give you other, a bunch of options.
Okay.
Okay.
Reserve fund transfer.
No, I I I, me personally, I feel it's very important to get this rolling now or soon.
Yep.
Um, I mean, he's leaving in a month. I mean, we'll have him part-time, but still. That's my personal feel.
No, I agree, I agree, I mean, we're a new board.
Yeah, well, I'm new, you guys have been around for a little bit.
Essentially, we're, well, we have a new chair, okay, so.
Yeah, but you've been around for a little bit.
Yeah, but not in the chis- not in the chair, yep.
I agree, but you've been around for quite a while.
Everybody else is, yeah, our youngsters compared to me.
Correct, yeah, you're like a statue.
So what does your interim look like? How long are you gonna be interim?
It depends on how long your search takes.
Do you know what the estimated time is from the search forms right now, of how long they've been taking from starting the process to putting someone in? Isn't it like sixty to ninety days plus? And then do you know, in following things, Ryan, what the estimated time has been for um TA search committees and starting, like, if it was just done in-house from start to finish?
At least that.
You didn't say exactly.
Unless you're really organized.
Yeah, I mean, we'd have to put a committee together, and we can't get people to fund, I mean, fill what we have now, you know what I mean, so.
The, it's oftentimes filling the search, I'm just going off here guessing, but
Yeah.
filling the search committee is not as hard, because if you poll, just like we do with certain other committees, where you say we want one person from this committee, one person from that, and then
Oh, yeah. Right.
one or two people from the residents.
The public, yeah.
You know, usually people want to be involved in something like that, right, it's high-profile, you get to meet, you know, potentially someone who's gonna be running the town and so forth.
Yeah.
But I think, you know, to everyone's point, I mean, I agree, time is of the essence, but and I think we need to figure out what we wanna do before we even further engage in the conversation of Ryan serving part-time or needing to do an interim, because I think the timepiece is there.
That's why I'm throwing it out there, I I'm recommending that, uh from my point of view, I I'm in favor of that, but it obviously, it's it's a decision of the boards.
So to Heather's point, a headhunter could get you interim pretty quickly.
They're ready to go immediately.
And then you'd have someone, let's say you wanted to slow down your search and take six months, that would be someone of the qualifications of David Nixon, who would come in. The downside being they they don't know the specifics of the town. Again, I would offer to consult there, to help with the transition, um that's another option, but it's it's what you wanna do.
So are you willing to be interim for sixty to ninety days?
If it was gonna be sixty to ninety, then yes. Any more than that, I can't commit.
Would would Carlisle be on board with that, or that's unknown, so you have to negotiate that in with the contract?
Okay. I've talked to them about it, I'm not comfortable speaking for them fully yet, but they said they would they would like the bridges burned, and to make the transition as smooth as possible for everybody, so there is some room. Yeah.
But if I might uh allude to that, though, I don't, in my opinion, we can't separate the two, I mean, if he's going to do as an interim, I think it follows that we should use a professional firm to be the headhunters. Because to me, if he's interim sixty to ninety days, and we're gonna try to do it on our own, we're not a cheap, we're not gonna, we're gonna be out there without.
I'm not suggesting we separate them too.
No, I wasn't, I'm just clarifying that.
Yeah, no, yeah.
Yeah. So again, I throw that out to the board.
But, you know, I'd rather have someone who's been in the captain's seat for a little while, as opposed to bringing someone in and rock.
Yep. I agree with you.
What about having someone, I know this was part of your notes as well, Ryan, about having someone internally in a current department head role, serving as um the interim?
Yeah, and without naming names, there's also regional, regional people that you might consider that are familiar with the town, so the benefit of that is you do have someone with some knowledge. So you would essentially promote the internal candidate to serve in the town administrator role. The main functions you want there are um appointing authority, obviously, HR discipline, and then warrant signing, which is a power given to me by the charter. So you could appoint someone in the interim to serve in that role, obviously, I know the staff would would help them as well. Um but you have people here that are capable of that. What you wouldn't get from that is the liaisoning I do with the boards and committees would likely be very diminished, and then um some some project management would be would be too much for the staff to take on, but it would get you to the interim. If you think you're hiring permanently in ninety days.
So my only, so I've been involved in a lot of TA search projects over the years, mostly as the applicant, so speaking from the app- just saying, speaking from the applicant standpoint, um I, it all depends on whether you've had positive or negative experiences with search firms. Um as to whether or not I think you're inclined to apply to communities with a search firm. A lot of people I've talked to, it depends on the search firm, it's, you know, tends to be a lot more stressful, sometimes just having the search committee, you get to know a little bit more of the people, and not to say you don't go through a search committee anyway, because a lot of times, you know, you wanna filter things before you get to the select board level, so even having a consultant does not necessarily mean you're doing away with the search committee, it just means you're doing one in addition there, too. Um for the pros and the cons, uh a lot of towns right now do the um the candidate profile that they put together. Um when Paxton, I watched all their uh search committee meetings, they had actually talked about whether or not it was advantageous to do a consultant or do it internally through the search committee. And they actually did their own profile, they used the template of a couple others, everyone just dove in, and they they pulled everything together pretty quickly. Um where they did the whole thing in about two months on their end, so it is possible, but I I haven't always had great experiences with the consultants as a candidate, so I, but again, I mean, you know, we're a smaller community, we're gonna probably attract someone who is on the newer side to the TA world. Huh?
Or older.
Or, yeah, okay, um or someone who wants to be at the end of their career, um who lives nearby and just wants a closer commute, and, you know, a nice small town, but I mean, those are, those are different factors. I guess it's just not as apparent to me, one way or the other, which way to go, cause to me, we're gonna have to do a search committee anyway. So the search committee's gonna have to exist, um whether or not to do the consultant, I I don't know the answer to that, but I guess my recommendation would be that we move forward with establishing a search committee tonight, at least get that posted, and then meet with the consultant next next week, and see if that should be part of the plan. But regardless, I mean, there's been, of all the towns in the area that have gone through the recent TA search, I think the majority of them have used a search committee, only a handful went straight to the select board, skipped the TA search committee piece.
Question for you, Ryan, in terms of just the uh professional firm. Did you have one in mind when you mentioned that? There's a firm that would hit search?
There's only a couple, um I have someone that could come in, and they said they'd they'd be willing to talk to you about the process.
And are you familiar with that firm and?
I am, I am, yeah, doesn't mean you have to use that firm, obviously, trying is ridiculous.
No, but I mean, I, no, but I would take your recommendation in the sense that they've been doing it. Well, sounds sounds like we have two suggestions here, so.
I I think we should put out for a search committee, like Heather said, and I think we should listen to whomever Ryan has next week to hear what they have to offer. And then we can, we also have a week to think about it. I do believe that we should have a search committee to filter it before it gets to us to filter again.
Agreed.
You know, cause it, the more people, I mean, it slows it down, but at the same time, it, you, this is a small town, we, you gotta have
I am.
the, yeah, you you gotta, so I, yeah, that's what I.
And there's a lot of qualified people in this town to do work like that, so.
Yeah, yeah.
A lot of warriors in town, so.
To be honest, a lot of all your volunteering, so.
Well, where does that put us also in terms of using Ryan as?
I I personally, with the amount of change that is going on right now, I would like somebody to kinda stay steady the ship. Because between the the chief and Mallory and the building department and all this crap, it's just, and we have two town meetings we're staring down, this is, yeah, no.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. It's almost overwhelming, really, how much stuff's coming up, so.
Yeah, yeah, it's gonna be a lot.
A lot.
So I I personally, if he can kinda steady us to get us through at least some of this, to get into a direction. I feel like it'd be better than somebody new coming in.
Agreed.
So we're leaving open both suggestions essentially, because we're gonna have the gentleman come next week to speak to us, who represents the search firm, right?
Well, that would be, e- even if we did use a firm, we could still use the search committee as the filter.
Mm-hmm.
So I think Heather's correct with having the filter of the search committee to have that, if we choose to use a firm.
Yeah, they send it to the committee.
They send it to the committee to filter it through, they do all their questions, just like they did last time, where they had the search committee here, and we all watched poor Ryan get grilled.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Uh along with a few other candidates, and we could, you know, technically, we can watch that beforehand, so that way we even feel, you know, more we can ask the questions we want to ask as a select board, and we'll have a better feel for it.
So my suggestion with the TA search committee, cause I know folks will wanna think about, you know, which representatives from the town should be on it, but I think if we're gonna open it up to the public, I think we should estab- establish a search committee this evening, at least with the total number of seats, and then the number of public seats, and get that posted for a quick turnaround for next week. And then the board can reconvene and decide who should obtain those other seats, but at least we'll have applicants from the public for those public seats.
Yeah.
And whether we go with a consultant firm or not, or that consultant firm or not, we can at least at that point appoint um the TA search committee. You know, usually, we've done what, um send someone from finance, send someone from this, and the chair or their designee comes to the thing, so it's easy to do the appointment.
Yeah.
And that way, we're good to go. So the only question in my mind would be, how many people makes the right number of people on a search committee, and I've been on them from three people to eleven, Ryan?
Same.
They can have it as small or as large.
How many do we have? How many do we have last time?
Like seventy.
No, it was seventy.
Probably eleven in my.
Really? Wow.
Ri- here? Was it? I don't think it was happening.
I think seven's a good number.
Yeah.
I like seven.
Always odd.
Odd, yeah, cause you're always gonna have that.
Yeah. You gotta have odd.
Yeah. Um so yeah, seven, nine, I wouldn't go, eleven seems too much.
Yeah, I would, I I think seven's a good, really good number. But.
No, if we go this route, what are we talking about? Is it realistic that that the amount of time that he could give us as interim?
Mm-hmm. What do you think, Chris?
Can we do that and achieve all of this in the sixty to ninety days, and have someone on board to take over?
Well, I think it
Is that realistic?
I think they're separate questions, right, cause I think right now, we're just talking about if we establish a search firm, we get the ball rolling, and then we still meet with the consultant next week
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
and see if they add to that process, or we choose not to add them to the process, but keep that rolling. And then Ryan, whether or not he serves as part-time or not, I think that's a separate, a separate piece, I don't think they impact the other. I think ultimately, we don't really know what the timeline is, but we know it's gonna be at least sixty to ninety days, regardless which way you go.
But Ryan also, to be fair, needs to know
Yeah, but
for his time schedule, whether we're gonna be.
I I don't wanna buck up the water, but um
Yeah.
you know, and I'm I'm not suggesting that it'd be some crazy fee, but you could use me as a consultant to help an interim, which I would be able to do much longer than actually serving
As the firm.
in the seat, so there, what I really want you to do is think about what you want. Cause if you want the search to take a hundred and twenty to a hundred and eighty days, cause you want the right applicant.
Need an interim.
Bring an interim in who's supported by me is probably the best plan. Because, you know, my time is gonna dwindle, but that person's experience is gonna increase, you could even extend them if you needed to, it gives you more flexibility. If you think you can get it done in ninety days, then yeah, you know, use someone like me, just offering to help get you to wherever you wanna go. To He- I think what Heather's trying to s- I don't wanna speak for Heather, that's dangerous. I think it's, let's get it going, and then we can figure out what to do next, and you'll know.
Yeah, yeah, if we get the, you know, if we vote on putting together committee tonight, and by next week, we're already a week ahead, we already, you know, could have a committee somewhat almost formed by the time we meet the consultant.
Mm-hmm.
And
Then we're rolling, yeah.
And then we're rolling, if we go with a consultant, if they can co- co-join with a committee, oh, well and good, if not, we do it on our own, we've already got the committee, so.
Mm-hmm.
Then, um why don't we entertain a motion, if that's the feeling of the board, to uh set up and establish whether it's seven to nine or whatever, you wanna recommend a search committee, effective setting tonight.
Yeah. How many, uh, yeah, what are we thinking about, public versus town?
I think two members of the public.
Two of the public?
Two people who aren't involved in any other board or committee, cause that way, you know, they're representing
Right, yeah. Clear mind.
who we have.
Two staff.
Two staff?
Yeah, you gotta have the staff involved, trust me, but.
Right.
So what are you gonna charge us to stay on for sixteen to ninety days?
You're on a different topic, you can't.
Yeah, he's still, he's still on prices.
Can we di- can we finish the TA search, and then we could circle?
Yeah, can you, we gotta deal with this first, Chris, okay, okay, cause.
I thought this was popular.
Who, they, I think a lot.
Well, we haven't got a formal motion yet, but I was, we're trying to set up the uh
I'd like to make a motion.
Committee.
The committee first.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion for a, for the select board to have a sever- seven-member search committee, which two of them would be public
Search committee for?
For finding a
To
a new
Town administrator, right, okay, mm-hmm.
new town administrator, yes. Two of them be from the public, two be staff.
Staffs.
Town staff. Yeah, two for
And then we have three
Three from committees.
from committees. Which committees do we want?
Finance.
Finance.
Planning.
Planning.
Finance.
Planning and
Do you want a select board, or do you want everyone to stay neutral?
No, let's stay neutral, because they're gonna come to us, let's stay neutral.
Okay.
The final thing is to come to us, so, yeah, I think we should try to stay off of those rules.
Yeah. Yeah, so I think we should stay off it. What's another good?
We could do a school committee, that would be a different twist that we've never done.
Jesus.
Okay, Peter disagrees with me by the shake of head. I just throw him off it.
Uh Well, no, I just, not that, I don't, nothing bad against them, no, nothing bad against them, I just, I don't.
My boy crushed this one up.
They all come on.
Well, what about the senior center or C O A?
Don't.
Well, which, yeah, which which committees interact with you the most, on a like realistic basis, like who's sitting in your office?
Well, possibly the seniors.
Or dealing.
Claudia.
Council, yeah, Claudia or the council, someone from the council and the agent.
That's, that's kinda staff and the heads.
Yeah, Claudia's like kinda staff.
Oh, yeah, okay.
If you're set on seven, you could do one at large, and then see what boards and committees apply, and then pick it that way.
Okay, yeah, I like that idea, and one at large, and we'll pick the at-large member.
And when you say at-large, you mean one committee member at large?
From, yes.
So someone.
Yeah, someone.
So it's two staff, two, two civilians, two staff, two public, one at large, and
Definitely planning and finance.
We'll read it.
And one planning and one finance.
One planning, one finance.
All right, we have a motion, could you re-
Quiet, that's not, that's not, you just said nine people.
Well, let's just re- re-
No.
Let's go over it.
Heather's been writing it down, so.
All right, two, two at-large, okay.
Heather's, Heather's, she's been writing it down, so.
I have, according to Katie's motion here, she has two members of the public, two members of staff,
Yeah. Yeah.
a member of the finance committee, one member of the planning board, and one committee member at-large.
Yes, which is seven, right?
Which is seven.
That's what I got.
Yes, I got seven.
I was second then.
Two staffs.
Black finance.
Motion made and seconded, now can we read the whole motion?
Okay.
Please.
Katie has a motion for the select board to appoint a town administrator, to, I'm sorry, form a town administrator search committee comprising of seven members, who are the following, two members from the public, two staff members, one member um made up from finance, one from planning board, and one member from committees at-large.
Okay, is, so is there a second?
I seconded that, okay.
Oh, okay, so any discussion?
What if we can't fulfill all those seats with people from those particular boards?
I imagine we're gonna be able to.
You will.
And this is to be achieved by
Okay.
I'd say it'd due date next Monday.
Have At least to re- bring it back
I don't know about the public, but yeah, for sure, we could probably get the the staff and the the board
Yeah, let's hope we can get. Excuse me.
hopefully by next Monday, maybe the public.
And how are are people from a public who may not be watching this tonight know that this exists, and that they can come in and
Please put town wide.
apply for this, apply for this committee?
So, our plan for that would be to post on social media, to send out a townwide email, and to email all the board and committee heads to tap their networks.
I mean, on the side.
Yeah, we can put it on the side, we have the
On the side.
And it's as simple as that, there's no particular legalese we have to follow.
Oh, no, this is completely up to you.
Okay.
One of the few times we get to decide.
And should we have more than uh seven interested people? The final decision, can that be ours?
To expand, yeah.
Yeah.
Just re-vote.
It is.
As to who wouldn't be.
Yeah.
But I don't know if I'd recommend expanding.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, what's your question? I'm not sure I understand your question, to increase the number of the committee?
If we, we want a committee of seven people, we create a committee of seven people, okay? And if it turns, if it turns out we have more people interested than what we're trying to set up.
You get eleven applicants. Are you suggesting we increase the size of the committee?
I'm not suggesting, I'm simply saying if that comes, can that be our final decision, to say, no, we wanna stick with what we have. In the same sense, we may not, the the other side is, we may not get you seven.
I don't see that as a problem, I really don't, but
But I, not with
I I say stick with seven, if you're gonna start with a number, stick with it.
Yeah, don't win any.
Yeah, don't we need to stick with them? Don't we need to decide a number now and kinda stick with them?
Throw and true. Yeah.
Oh, no, I wasn't suggesting changing the number, but.
No.
Okay. Any other discussion?
So who will, so?
We have the board.
Any applications would come to the board for the board's decision of who to appoint?
Hmm?
Yeah.
Yep.
You're reading my mind, girl, okay.
We've been hanging out.
Okay.
Yeah, just like the rest of the boards and the committees, well, yeah, not boards, the ones unless it's appointed.
Any further discussion? We're ready to vote, okay, well, all in favor of Katie's uh motion?
Aye.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed, motion's carried, so we need to get going on that right away.
So now back to, I think Chris had brought up, Jeff, going back to the, what are we doing with Ryan? For the interim piece.
So I asked how much you're gonna charge us to be our interim.
Depends on what, what you want. The uh, I would suggest talking to the consultant next week, developing a timeframe, and then deciding on the next course of action. Really bringing it up and getting you to talk about it is to get you to think about what you want.
Get our minds working.
So that. You know, some, sometimes, just to be fully candid, a town administrator will say, hey, I have this new opportunity, and the board says, great, go. We don't want you to run the town anymore.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Well, yeah, especially.
It wasn't getting that vibe, but you can't communicate to me in a way.
No, I mean, not, I, I, you already know how I feel, so.
Yeah, just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you weren't vested, I'd be like, no, bye. Sorry, I would, I'm not gonna lie. It's just like one of those, like, if you weren't, if I didn't feel you were vested in this town.
Oh.
Yeah, I'd be like, no, get us somebody, no, we're done.
Can I ask a question about, I mean, how long is your contract go through? When is your, you just signed a contract, what, a year ago?
About halfway, about eighteen months.
You're like eighteen months into a three-year?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And what's your notice requirement, Ryan, when you depart?
Before I went overseas.
Six weeks.
Six weeks, okay. Did you hear that, Peter, and Amy, okay?
Six weeks, notice.
For notice, yeah?
Yeah.
That's what we've contracted with Ryan, or, and that's what he's giving us with the August something it'll be?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Six, yeah, it's about eight weeks, but yeah.
Yeah.
More than that.
Well, that was fine, okay.
Mr. Chair, I think we're on old business.
Yes, okay. F Y twenty-three budget discussion, Ryan?
Okay, so I've sent you several notes about this, just continuing to have conversations, but one thing that, that I need guidance on for tonight is what we're going to do with Rutland Regional Dispatch. So to lay out the, the current discussion on the budget, um, we have reached out to Rutland on several occasions. I can give you dozens of emails. So go all the way back really quickly, we tried to address some communication issues and some uh general I M A following items like annual operations meeting and a couple budget meetings in order to discuss and have some transparency in the management and the finances of Rutland Regional Dispatch. No problems with the operation of Rutland Regional Dispatch and would, would like to continue the partnership, but the communication, especially regarding the budget and finances and the tower have not been to the boards or the finance committee or my um liking. So, we've reached out a few times to try and have a meeting with varying success and connected with Barry and Oakham who have had the same issues and have been unable to get a meeting to discuss, discuss this topic. So essentially with the budget, we were given a budget and told that's the bill. Uh, according to the I M A, there are supposed to be discussions regarding the budget, and there's supposed to be at least an annual discussion about operations to include, in my opinion, what staffing is required. So, I'm not against the budget and I'm not against the operational stance, but I am against and recommending and have recommended to the board and finance committee that without a discussion about it, I would suggest that, that both approach the board of select, selectmen or the select board at Rutland and say that we're not going to fund the budget at any level except for a level that we've communicated about, which is now a couple fiscal years ago. So, if the board is willing, based off conversations we've had in the past, I would recommend sending a letter saying until there is a discussion about the F Y twenty-three budget that you are going to reduce or recommend to town meeting, that you reduce the assessment that was given to you to a level that you're comfortable with. Um, and hopefully that, that kickstarts a conversation that, that should've happened quite a while ago. But I don't have the authority to do that, I know that I've been instructed to do that, so I, I either need a formal vote or a discussion about whether or not we should let this go. In my opinion, you're facing some type of deficit in the budget, unknown at this time. Uh, this would be the time to to tr- to try and make sure that every department across the board is being scrutinized the way we're scrutinized, the school budget and all other department budgets, trying to squeeze every dollar we have to not use higher revenue projections or other things that impact our financial standing in order to solve what's coming for a deficit.
So help me understand this. We have an amount that we said we'd pay them for the service?
We have an amount that they said we should pay them.
And we have a different amount?
We've never discussed it with them, they just gave us the bill.
So they just sent this, is it a number that shocked us or surprised us or?
One item, two items in particular are the uh health insurance line item, to me, is overly conservative.
Uh-huh.
Which is fine if the town's running all the finances, but if you're splitting that bill amongst five people, you owe an actual cost.
Right.
So to say double what the cost might be and then bill everybody for that, I feel like warrants more discussion.
Yeah.
Another item is they added a deputy director position, fully funded in the budget, and while I'm not against uh any particular employee or, or adding employees if it's needed, um, this wasn't discussed, it's, it's a major increase in the budget, and we have denied all of our departments additional deputies, foremans, and additional positions because we don't have the resources.
Right.
So it's easy when you're splitting the cost among five towns to say that the increase is only fifteen thousand, but that fifteen thousand would mean a lot to us in terms of the current budget deficit. And then lastly, there needs to be some conversations about fixed costs. So we do lease space from Rutland, what is that formula? How are those costs calculated? And what are we committing to? Are three items that, you know, generally I can pick out. And I do think that, like all other budgets, you saw me go through how we go month to month with our budget versus actually, I think we are owed at least a quarterly report on how that budget's performing and whether or not at the end of the year, they met their projections or not. So a really boring municipal example of that is when you build a budget like this, you say, we're gonna get this much revenue. Do they or do they not get that much revenue and how does that impact how costs are, are divvied out? It's something that we monitor all of our departments for. We don't have that authority because this is a inter-municipal agreement. So I think, my legal opinion, that the initial, the I M A allows for this type of discussion, and until it's had, I don't think it's fair to say that the towns just get it built. It's different with the school committee, they're an elected board that represents
Right.
sixty percent of the budget, and there's a process for them saying this is what the assessment is. This is an agreement between five towns that's supposed to be a collaboration, and it just doesn't feel that way.
No, shouldn't that be negotiated by each town, negotiate, I mean, they just throw another staff member on and expect these five towns to just pay the money for whatever reason they say?
Yes.
Based, you know, in a, in a, roughly put, you know what I mean? So.
When asked during a budget discussion, it was stated that this, paraphrasing, that it's Rutland's decision.
On hiring, another staff member, so it's non-negotiable.
Yes. I think that's their opinion, I.
That's their opinion, what does the I M A say?
It, it doesn't.
It doesn't.
It's not clear.
It's not clear, so it's a gray area. So there's, drifting into the gray area, cause there's nothing in writing.
Well, additionally too, I think, from Ryan's point of view, if I'm sure, we talked this morning, one of the reasons, it's important that if we want him to, to continue to be the voice, um, we as a board.
Yep.
Need to be, stand solid as a board with this letter. This isn't just to solve this one moment, be, this is for the future.
Yeah. No, this has been going on for months, this has been going on for months now.
But no, and this is future, because it's gonna, every year we're gonna have to go through something like this, so that it's to get
Yeah.
communication, I guess, started, which has been a frustration for him, because he just, it's getting nowhere, and of course Rutland now, they need a TA, so that element is gone, so we're essentially stating our feelings in a letter to their board and basically saying, we, hey, we gotta do something about this, as opposed to personally, I, I don't think we should just walk away from it after all these years trying to, trying to.
Yeah, but you, you can't just let, let them slam you with a, an increase like that for no reason.
No. Which is why we, I think we need to, we need to state it strongly in the letter.
We gotta start somewhere.
Yep.
Not only do we want communication to start, but that we're, we're not about to just accept that it's gonna be thrown at us.
Why?
We gotta do something to, to um get something going, you know, we gotta do something, you know, leg- well, I would say legally, as, as a, as representatives of the town.
Yep. Mm-hmm.
And we're representing the town, cause you know, you just can't pay, alright, we hired a deputy, alright, we need fifteen thousand from each town, and what is that saying? We don't have no say, so.
So he's willing to, with time that's left, you know, to continue this fight, but we need to, uh, if we're, we, that's what we want him to do.
Yeah, well.
Yep.
But by, it would require a vote, a motion to get this letter, and that would allow him then to, you know.
Yep.
How does it, how does it impact the service?
I think that's, so, to put it as clearly as I can, we would bring the police department in if they said, we wanna add a lieutenant position. And we would make them sit here and explain what they needed. And if they needed it, then you would fund it. I'm not saying that Rutland Regional doesn't need a deputy position, I'm saying that it should be explained.
No, I understand that, but if we, if we push back, how does it, is there a deadline to get this resolved, this whole situation, or is it?
So they've already passed their budget and I believe are going to be advertising for this position. So, soon.
I, I think when, what happens, so I don't know if you've had an opportunity to have a conversation with Legal on this, but what happens if we do not pay them? We send them the letter, we say, hey, until we continue our conversation, we're gonna pay, well, I guess we are paying them, but we're gonna pay you the number you gave us last time we negotiated or discussed this, which is two years ago, and here's the amount.
Yeah.
Is there any legal ramifications of that? I think Katie might've been getting to, you know, can they say, great, well, take your dispatch services and have a nice day?
Exactly.
Yeah, so where does that tie into the tower though? Is that separate from what we're talking about here? Is the tower part of this too?
The tower is a different issue, but.
They own it.
They own it.
They own the tower.
They own the tower. We own the land, they own the tower.
Right.
Big hot mess.
Huh?
It's a big hot mess.
It certainly is.
Yeah.
So I'm in support of a letter as long as we touch base with Legal before sending it to make sure they don't see something we're not seeing. So as long as Legal does not object, I have no objections to sending a letter stating that we would pay them um the amount that we last budgeted last time we negotiated with them, which was, you said F Y nineteen? Or F Y twenty?
Yeah, I mean, we had somebody put in the, in the F Y twenty budget.
So the F Y twenty number, and then hopefully that will spur discussions and conversation.
Well, I'm gonna say, we also need to make certain that we also are saying we want discussion, communication to be taking place here.
I mean, we're still in discussion, correct, Jeff?
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
We're still in discussion. Um, can they just boot us from this thing, or we're contracted? We haven't had a contract in, in two years, you said?
No.
We have an inter-municipal agreement, that's current.
That's current.
But the last time we discussed what we were doing for moving forward with staffing and so forth, and actually lived to the letter of the I M A was two years ago.
At least, yeah.
So I, I just.
Prior to you being a baron.
I, I just, you know, can they just say, alright, you know what, we're all done with you guys? Now we have no.
So, yeah, so how long is the I M A for?
So it renews automatically each year indefinitely?
So, at the next renewal, we could be.
Not renewed.
移 moved from the I M A?
Sure, but there are implications on that, in my opinion, uh, if the state provides revenue for a five-town district, it would be a significant blow to their district. Sure they could find another partner, but there is a lot that goes into adding them. Um, I, I don't think anyone's suggesting dropping, I think it's pretty reasonable to ask for basic conversation, and no bill has not been paid, I just think it's time to act.
Just a little bit of attention, you know, like that's basically like, they, somebody needs to listen.
Yeah. He's basically been ignored.
Yeah, I mean, you, you've been after them for, I mean, what, eight, ten months? Has this been going on, eight months, ten months?
Yeah, I know.
This time around, yeah.
Years.
Yeah.
This, this time around.
Jesus, what, what is, what is going on with?
The tower's been going on for years.
I know, but.
Crazy, oh, that, that's crazy and.
And that's separate from this issue.
Well, it's still all the same.
It's still all the same, but a separate issue from what we have now.
Yeah, but that kind of stuff has been going on for at least six, eight years.
Yeah, but it's.
Why? Cause if, if they have a director and a deputy director, if they didn't, can't reach out to you, like they're gonna hire, hey, is it, is it the director's respons- responsibility to make sure, um, this, you know, we stay status quo with them, or who, who run, or is it the select board in Rutland?
Unclear.
Excuse me?
Unclear.
Do they have meetings?
The Rutland Select Board? No, the whole, the whole group, the Rutland Regional Dispatch.
Yeah.
Who runs it?
The.
Select Board? Rutland Regional Dispatch?
That's what they would say, yes.
Is it, is it a self-entity in the town, or is it, is it a department in the town of Rutland? Or is it come under the fire department?
It's a inter-municipal agreement for five towns to share the services provided by the town of Rutland.
They're the host community.
They're the host community of, okay.
I'm not dodging your questions, the I M A is very vague.
Yeah, it's gray, it's very gray.
So, why don't we send a warm body over there and talk to their select board? Have we done that yet? Have you gone down there and requested a face-to-face?
They usually. They meet the same time we need.
Yes, I have.
And they say no?
We've met and we've had many discussions about how communication should continue and we wanna have a partnership and.
And what do they say?
That's what they say.
It doesn't go any further. Oh, my God. Well, we gotta, we gotta, I say, let us sound as good to me speak to Legal, cause we gotta get moving with it, I mean, it's just lying in limbo, right?
Can we, uh, if we pass the motion for the letter, can we leave the wording of it up to you?
No.
No, okay, then we need to be specific in terms of what and how you, we would wanna express what Heather was suggesting, as well as getting across that we ought to want
What you got, Heather?
Communications to start.
What you got?
And not that, I don't want it to come across that we want communication, we expected it, we have it, and then we want it to start up, you know? Engage, I guess.
Well, I suggest we pay what we're contracted for, what we originally contracted for, like Heather was talking about. Tell them we're not gonna pay them anymore until we can get together and have a sit-down and decide what's happening and talk to Legal about it, our Legal about it, see what they think about the whole situation. And figure something out, I think this is.
So you're suggesting that that be in the letter?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's pretty much what Heather said.
Mr. Chair, would you entertain a motion?
Yeah.
Yes, I'll entertain a motion, okay.
I'd like to make a motion that as a select board, we authorize Ryan to draft a letter to the Regional Dispatch Communication Center, as well as the Select Board of the Town of Rutland, um, to notify them that we are asking for them to engage with all the regional partners for discussions about the budgets and operational plans, and until such time, we will be reverting back to the F Y twenty um budget that was approved for the Regional Dispatch pending um legal review.
That sounds good.
Second.
Motion read and second, okay. Is there any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, uh, all in favor?
Uh, yes.
Aye.
Yes, okay. Thank you, Heather, thank you, everybody.
Chris, just, that has been done. I mean, I know how to have conversations with people, like, I have requested this over and over and over again. We've, I've met with three town administrators now.
Alright.
I've met regionally with twenty partners. At the time, Katie was the representative from, from the board on communications, and she's seen the dozen or so emails, to include several I sent from Iraq on trying to get the communication going. It's, it's not for lack of effort, it really isn't. I know it seems simple, but they're just not responding.
No one's suggesting that it's lack of effort, believe me.
And, and David was having the same result.
But who sets their, who sets the Regional Dispatch's budget?
Regional Dispatch?
They do their own budget, so it's their own group within the town.
They do. Yeah.
It's just, that department sets it for five towns.
Yeah, it's gotta fall in the fire department, it's gotta fall with the budget.
It's its own.
Its own lit- entity.
It's not an entity, it's his own department.
Own department, for the town of Rutland.
Correct. It's like if we had our building department shared with another town, they would pay us for that service.
Yeah.
But I promise you, I would talk to that town to make sure that they were also comfortable with buying one.
Yeah.
Do we know if any of the other towns are as upset about it as we are?
I think Barry and Oakham are.
Oh, yeah. Yes.
They are.
Very upset.
Yes.
You know, it's my experience, and we had an experience here recently with Gardner, that when something like this happens, there's an underli-
You know, it's my experience, and we had an experience here recently with Gardner, that when something like this happens, there's an underlying root cause, and you gotta peel back the layers of the onion.
Yeah.
Time and time and time and time again to get to that root cause. So I think this is a, is is a Rutland issue. I certainly won't speculate as to why they seem to be avoiding our requests, but. You know, I I'd rather, and I know you said you've done this many times, is just. You know, sit down and figure it out, and start sending legal notices back and forth, but if that has failed time and time again, then. I guess that's what we gotta do, but, yeah.
And these other towns that you were mentioning, have they gotten to the step of self, sending letters? Would it, would it have more clout if all three towns?
Joined together, I would say so.
Had a joint letter?
We requested, we're gonna have a meeting on Thursday, so I will send this before then, pending legal review.
Signed by. Hmm.
And make it part of the discussion.
This Thursday, the meeting's with who?
All parties. All towns have been invited to have a conversation.
Didn't have all accepted?
Maybe that's something you could.
Barry and O Cam have.
In investigate or inquire about?
So they. So they accepted a meeting last week remotely, that the other two towns couldn't get to. And then we said to move it to Monday, and there was no response, so we reset it for Thursday, to see if there would be a response.
Who were the other towns?
Warren is the only other one that hasn't been named yet. They're the newest town to the district.
Warren.
But the other ti- you meant the towns that are upset about it?
Yeah.
That's.
That's just Warren?
Yeah, the side.
That's upset about it, besides us.
Like friendlies. But they just want more, honestly, upset is too strong a word, they want more kinds of.
A whole of friendly side, right?
Warren Wilberham.
Or.
Or Wilberham.
Communicate.
Wilber.
But it's just Warren?
Warren.
Warren hasn't weighed in.
I remember Warren's.
Uh, it's on the other side.
Well, hopefully, you'll get some, some information and feeling from this, if, from this meeting.
We gotta do something, we just, we just can't sit and do nothing, I mean.
No, no.
He's been spending a lot of ti- I know he's been spending a lot of time with us, and he's beating his head against the wall, it's like, wait a minute, he's gotta do something, we have to do something as a board.
Hmm. Right. And we're limited too, all we can do is, in this sense, send a letter.
Yeah, we can send a letter to the Select Board, like, what are we doing?
And to do what Chris suggested, we're gonna, we pay them what we owed them two ye- we agreed upon two years ago.
Yeah. Carry on with what our, our previous agreement was.
They ignored us for two years, so hey, we'll, we'll pay you what you sent.
Yeah, yeah, here's where it is.
But we need to get something moving, just so that, uh, we don't have to deal with this like this every single year.
Yep.
Are you clear on what we want?
Yes.
Okay. Let's, uh, go to all business B agenda for Select Board Goals Workshop, next Monday's meeting.
So I had offered a template for this discussion on, um, staffing levels for the town. Uh, capital, capital needs, building needs, and then master plan. So those are the items that I would like to discuss. Obviously, send my thoughts on each of those to prior to the workshop, but the idea behind the workshop is to. At least start a discussion, if not, set a direction for those particular topics. And the reason why is they're gonna feed the implementation of the master plan. They're going to, um, set the budget for the next few years, especially in terms of debt management, free cash usage, which is really important. And then all decisions are really pending on facilities, facilities maintenance. So that includes staff morale and retention, it includes debt management, and it includes any potential tax implications. So without those decisions, and it could be that we're not doing anything with facilities, it's, it's hard to plan the larger things. So we're getting really good at the, the day-to-day operations and that type of thing, but we need a stronger picture on where you want to go. And it's a lot, but.
It's a lot, but you you gotta look forward, I mean, you have to look forward nowadays. You get, 'cause the town's in the shape it is, 'cause it was not forward-looking for a long time, so.
So Ryan, you're just looking to see if there's anything additional to those four things you'd like to add on for the goals portion of the next meeting?
Yes.
I have nothing, I was just clarifying the request.
Yeah, okay, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
You'll send something out?
Yes. Um, it would be my thoughts on that, for you to.
And all of us give up some thought, so we come in with, you know, some goals of our own, like to throw out. Okay, um.
I'd like to lose some more weight, so there's more leverage.
Okay, all business, uh, Opera Update.
Sure, so we had our last ARPA meeting a couple of weeks ago, uh, the application is prepped, and I believe it's up and posted, um, and out there. Uh, for people to apply for the second round of ARPA. Um, we currently have the deadline for the applications due is August first at four P M. Prior to that, if there's any questions from the applicants, on July twentieth from six to nine. Um, Susan and Mike, uh, will be holding a workshop, I think we're gonna try to find some space in person if we can. So if anyone wants to apply, but they have questions, they're not sure how to fill out the application, or what have you, they can come in and meet with them, and they'll help preliminarily walk them through the application, so they have all the materials. Um, once the applications are due on August first, the goal is for our committee to meet on August seventh, and then on August fourteenth. And the August seventh meeting will simply be going through to say, yes, this is a completed application with everything that was requested, no, it was not. Those that are not complete, we will work our best to get something out to them the very next day, and they will have seven days to cure it and get whatever we need. So if we said you, we need these finance statements, and they didn't include them, we'll give them seven days to get it in. And we meet on the fourteenth, if it's not a complete application, it's done. It does not get reviewed any further, it goes away. So they'll have seven days to get everything in from when we say, you didn't get everything in, and that's assuming they did not get to the workshop on July twentieth, and already have a beautiful-looking packet by that point. Um, at that point, our goal is to finalize, um, do some decision-making on the fourteenth, and finalize everything and be done by September first. So the application, Susan put in a lot of hard work, we did, um, in our meetings, we discussed how to revamp the application, try to simplify, and also cover the questions that we constantly asked applicants. So all those materials are there and part of that packet, so it's no longer in information or instructional, and in applications, all inclusive in one. So hoping that's helpful.
And what is it, one point four? Oh, oh, seven hundred, seven hundred thousand, right?
That was what we started with. Uh, we have less than, I think it was around four or so, and some change, I'm on the top of my head.
Four hundred.
Oh, four?
Seven hundreds already been used, yeah.
Okay, four.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was one point four, Peter.
Yeah, the original, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
So, that's all I have on ARPA, unless there's any questions.
But there might be more coming.
Might be more, well, you know, we'll see it when we see it.
Yeah.
Not here yet.
From the state?
Agreed.
Who knows, state federal, reigning money, we'll see.
State money?
State money. Those come to us.
Well, we can only vote.
Any question, any discussions on the Opera Update? Okay, then we'll go to item seven, the T A report, right?
I'll be brief, uh, reading the room. So Lombard Road. We got our final, final invoice and bill, so after the ups and downs, we are, we came in at five seventy-four, which is one thousand or around five seventy-four, so just under over a thousand dollars from the projection. This negates my comments from two weeks ago, saying that we would need additional funding, so that is good news.
Oh, the additional fifteen we don't need?
Correct.
Oh, great.
So it's my opinion that Travis went above and beyond with this, not only tracking the quality of the project, but, uh, keeping the costs.
That's great.
To where they should be. So we wanted to turn back money, that is a disappointment, but we don't need extra, so. Came in where we said, that's, uh, as good as you can get. Uh, the interim chief contract, this is gonna have to be a business item before the workshop next week. Um, I sent you some materials looking for individual feedback, and it'll likely be an executive session, followed by a public vote, if there's agreement, if not, then we can push it off and make it retroactive. So if you need me to re-forward that email, it's from the thirtieth of June. ARPA requests, um, I will be filing unless there is, um. Agreement from the board that I should not. A town center project construction management request, this is twenty thousand dollars to manage the town center project next year from our town engineers. And then, uh, working with the fire chief to discuss potential funds, whether it's all of it or partial for new ambulance and fire truck. Couple notes for ambulances and fire trucks. Because of the shortages that we're facing everywhere, we're two to three years out for any ambulance, and the costs of fire engines are, to be professional about it, going bananas. So, uh, just something to consider in, in capital planning. Um, not good news there, but it is the truth.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Is there a market that exists for used fire engines? Refurbished fire engines?
I I would have to check, but from what I do know, people hold on to them as long as they possibly can, so, because the cost is so high, so I don't think so. 'Cause there isn't such thing as a quick turnover on the engines.
Well, towns like ours do, but maybe some towns who have a little more cash flow may not.
I I will, I will look, but I, I believe it's, we're not.
And I ask because, you know, I'm concerned about what Chief said about one of our engines potentially being forced out of service because of its condition.
Me too. And those are also one to two years out.
And that seems to be like a, they get inspected annually, right? So in a year, that particular engine, I'm not sure which one he's talking about, could be, you know, redacted and put out of service.
Yes.
Is that, 'cause it's at its life's end? Is it at the end of its life?
I don't know enough to speak intelligently about it, uh, but I can get your report on it.
Okay. So.
Yeah.
Is there any kind of projection that it might level off after we get through? The rest of this, like, you know, vehicles and stuff, how maybe, um, sometime down the road, it might come back to normal, or no? Is it gonna be bananas forever?
I don't know that it's gonna go up sharply as it is now, but it's not coming down.
Yeah, okay. Awesome.
You're just thinking if the demand.
Uh, yeah, that's what I'm like, yeah, till eventually, yeah, eventually, things kinda level off. Usually, not always.
Supply reaches the demand.
It's like, it's like everything, right? I mean, it's a commodity. You go to the grocery store, it's crazy, you go to the gas station, it's crazy, you go buy a fire engine, it's crazy. Try and buy a new car, it's crazy.
That, that's what I'm saying.
Try and buy a used car, it's crazy.
Will it level out?
Try and buy a pair of sneakers, it's crazy.
Just stick with your samples, we're fine.
All right, building department personnel.
Yes, so, um, just working to continue to stabilize the building department, just letting the public know there's, there will be some bumps this first week or two, as we get everything settled. But everybody who has, needs to be appointed, has been appointed, and working with them. Mallory has been great in putting in some time for us to keep the department functioning, so more, you'll get a lot more information about the building department as we stabilize it. And then as soon as a budget decision is made, we will, uh, work on hiring a new commissioner and stabilize that department further. Technology and capital planning, so I worked with, uh, C M Geeks, our I T provider, to establish a new five-year technology plan that spreads costs out over the next five years. Believe it or not, we have to look at this again. There is no immediate need, and rather than do it all in two years like we did last time, trying to spread the costs out. Uh, this includes these investments that I talked about earlier, trying to get those last things done, and then we will start slowly replacing I T equipment. Over the next five years, building that into the capital plan. Also upgraded the town's Wi-Fi, which you'll all be happy to know, uh, Spectrum is going to speed it up about five to six times. And that's gonna cost us less, so I don't know how that works out, but it does.
What?
Lastly, library and schools, 'cause we're committing for a couple of years, just like you do at home. Uh, reached out to library and schools for their, um, capital improvement plans, and trying to tie those better into our long-term capital plan. Per your request and the C I P C's request. So a meeting with the library early next month, and the schools owe me a capital plan as well, to tie that all in together. And lastly, uh, I'm not gonna read this whole thing, but I just wanted to thank Chief Perrin for his service, I know he did it at a town meeting, but, uh, this week will be his final week. Tomorrow, we have a little staff and board goodbye, as I sent out to you. And, uh, it's not in his job description, but the chief would, would constantly work to help with the continuity of services in town hall and serve as, you know, with Chief Hayes, as one of the, the folks that have been here for a long time, and helping stabilize services. It's something no one would ever see, so not only was he the chief of police, but he was also a force working in town hall to make sure as you transition, and we go through these waves, uh, things kept moving and staying the same. He was personally very, uh, good to me, in terms of mentoring me on Hubbardson, and helping me get up to speed quickly, so hope he enjoys his retirement, and just would like to thank him for his service.
I would encourage any of you who can tomorrow, to go to that, I plan to go.
Sure.
I'll, I'll go if you buy me a cocktail.
I'll try.
Well, your choices are beer, cider, and soda, I think.
More beer.
That's a four.
That's a four P M, that's a four P M, so.
Yeah, I got, it's, yeah, and it's expensive.
So.
It was expensive four years ago, I can only imagine now.
Get a water.
You're worth, you're worth it, Peter.
I've never been there, so it'd be interesting.
I drink a lot of water every day, I'm sick of water.
Okay.
Okay, um, that is not really anticipated by the chair, um, I have none.
I have two very quick ones.
Okay.
One, James Payson, a D P W seasonal worker. June eighteenth, twenty eighteen, with a wage rate of fifteen thirty-one. I'm notifying the board of his appointment to the seasonal worker, and Andrea Mastrow, who helps us with minutes, with the planning board and the board of health. Uh, needed a adjustment that we missed, so she's moving to C three, which is seventeen forty-nine, effective July first. Again, notifying the board, need a vote to waive the notification period for these two employees, James Payson and Andrea Mastrow.
Carry, entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to waive the, what am I doing?
Notification period.
Give me those.
Let's see.
The notification period, so I can read the names.
James Payson.
For James Payson.
Andrea Mastrow.
And Andrea, what was it, Mast?
Mastrow.
Mastro.
Where's your glasses?
I know, for real, I'm getting to that point.
Second.
She hasn't finished the motion yet.
Oh.
I think that was the end of them.
Yeah, I think that was it, to, to waive for, back to what, July first and June eighteenth, oh, no, July seventh.
To wa- well.
Once, Andrea's back to July first, and, uh, James is to July seventh.
Seventh, we'll go with seventh.
Yeah, well, it says seven. Right, yeah, effective, see, he, he's squinting too, I can see.
I can't see.
Do you want my glasses?
It's the effective date, right?
Effective date is June eighteenth.
Oh, no, right there below, yeah.
Uh, seven, you're right, July seventh, I don't know.
Like, I can read.
You just gotta hold it.
Good luck with that motion, Tony.
Yeah, I know, sorry, Tony.
Okay, so, did we get a, can we get a second on the question? Okay, it's been eight and second, uh, any discussion?
I do, I second.
All in favor?
Uh.
Ah, yes.
Yes, opposed, motion carried. Anything else? Nothing anticipated, public press?
It's. Yeah, I know something not anticipated by the chair.
Okay. Go ahead.
The other day, I noticed the clock on the school wasn't keeping the correct time, it's, do we know why it's not working, and what it might take to fix it?
I've reached, reached out to the school, they have not gotten back to me yet, I'll follow up again.
Okay.
Well, the warranty will be off by the time I get back to the school.
Well, those haven't worked in years.
It always. I thought they fixed it when they did the roof.
No. Uh, no, 'cause the handles are still missing on one. I asked Dan when they were redoing the roof, they're gonna fix the clock towers, and he wasn't sure.
Well, I have a clock, if you're not gonna have it working.
So those have, those are still the same.
It's right twice a day.
Well, the one that doesn't have hands is right zero times a day.
Okay. No public press questions, et cetera?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made and to adjourn, no discussion, absolutely.
I feel it.
Thank you all, have a good night.
All right.
I'll see you tomorrow. I'll be the.
I'll see you.
Even though I don't really know the chief, so.
I'm gonna try, Hunter has a foot dogs that play Mountain Chelmsford at three.
I'll be go as a representative of the town.
So I'll be coming in. Yes. But I will try my best to get there.
And I'll be on my best.